Father, thank you for the privilege of being able to be here tonight and offer a prayer on behalf of our city and our city council. I just pray that as we move forward into the agenda tonight, that your guidance would be here, that your blessing would be upon all who participate and who are involved. And Father, I ask that you, as we push forward into a new year, that you would give our council the mind of Christ and the spirit of humble servants as they attempt and do their best to make decisions that will affect the lives and the community of our city and its citizens. Father, we just ask that your will would be accomplished in all of our lives, that your peace would prevail at this time of year, that we would be reminded the greatness of your gift to us, and that when we have done to the least of these, whatever we do, then it's as if we have done it unto you. So we thank you again for the opportunity to live in such a great country and a great place. We give you praise for all that you have done for us, and we say thank you for it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Ladies and gentlemen, to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is a special night from a proclamation standpoint, as we have three proclamations, the first of which is the Denison High School robotics team. You students will come forward, please. Students from the robotics team.
There is a call.
Yes.
Mr. Green, if you would, come forward and just, if you would, briefly tell the audience and the council what we're celebrating, and then I'll recognize the people with the proclamation.
Okay, this is the Denison High School robotics team. This year, second year in a row, we made it to the state competition. They placed first in regionals out of about thirty-five teams in North Texas, in the Dallas area, did really well there, and we went on to state and placed twenty-fourth out of probably two hundred, two-hundred-and-sixty teams. So that was a state competition. They did really, really well for the second year, and we're just real proud of them.
Congratulations. Very good. In Denison, Mayor Majors. In Denison, we start early. These guys are a high school team. That should explain a lot to you. Whereas the Denison High School robotics team participated in boosting engineering, science, and technology competition, better known as the best competition since nineteen ninety-two. And whereas the members of this team from Denison High School spent over a hundred-and-twenty hours, each of personal time towards this year's project, and whereas the robot was built by their design and strategy with only certain allowable tools, and whereas out of two-hundred-and-twenty teams, sixty teams from Texas and New Mexico were chosen to advance, and whereas this team represented the city of Denison and Denison High School exceptionally well, and for the second year in a row, reaching the regional competition, placing twenty-fourth. I, Jared Johnson, Mayor of the City of Denison, do hereby recognize these young adults for their achievement and encourage all citizens to congratulate them on this accomplishment. Good job. As you all know, we've had a little ice in the area lately, and all the public officials or public employees obviously couldn't be here tonight, but we've got a strong sample size from our Public Works division here today. And really, guys, we say, and it's easy for us as leadership to say, our best asset is our employees. But I'm just here to tell you that because of the things like what just occurred over the last ten days, every citizen in Denison knows that. And your service, and I'm just going to highlight just a few, there's stories coming in from all over about what you did during this time. I'm just going to highlight a few for those in the audience. But we had, starting last Thursday evening, around the clock, our city streets were being worked on. From Thursday night, December the fifth, through Monday night, December the ninth, it was a twenty-four-seven operation, also assisting police and fire in their needs during those responses. We had an equipment operator, Mr. Ernest T., who spent four nights at our city facilities just to be available for all sewer flush truck calls. It's an extremely important and unnoticed and unappreciated service, but we assure the citizen that's impacted at that time. Mr. Josh Bray, utility worker, walked to work to make sure he was available to his team and to the citizens of Denison. One of our employees, Mr. Jacob Bassett, helped us see, we actually had a citizen call in to brag on him, how he took the time to go and actually carry her trash, and she was a senior member of our community who couldn't get it out. She was impressed enough to make that call. And then the countless hours spent, once the main thoroughfares were taken care of, that this crew spent to ensure that nine days or eight days later, that the parade that had already been rescheduled one time was able to get accomplished, and those downtown business owners would be able to get their sidewalks and their streets back. Again, these are just a couple of examples of what you guys do every day. It doesn't take ice for us to appreciate you to know, but this is just a way that we could help highlight to our citizens the work you do. And we also have a proclamation. Whereas many citizens understand the sacrifices made by police and fire personnel, but few understand the difficult and trying circumstances under which public works personnel serve the public on a daily basis. And whereas these crews worked tirelessly over the past two weeks to respond to the most recent ice storm, working over ten thousand total man-hours over the past nine days, and responding to over seven-hundred-and-fifty calls during that same period. Whereas these city crews, fire, and police personnel, all as well as city facilities such as water and treatment plant and sewer treatment plant, are an integral part of the quality of life of our citizens. And whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on these individuals and these facilities for their services, that these employees have placed the citizens' concern over their own personal well-being, and that the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel of these staffed Public Works departments and those who serve as police and fire personnel are materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of their work. Now therefore, I, Jared Johnson, Mayor of the City of Denison, do hereby proclaim the city's gratitude and appreciation for your excellent work during this winter of Denison. Thank you.
Thank you.
We deeply appreciate it. Thank you all.
Good job.
Thank you. The unsung heroes, for sure, of what happens. People like to call about their parks, but they forget about the fact that the water that comes out every day, or that faucet, is because of those guys. So we are deeply appreciative. At this time, want to recognize Congressman Hall. Congressman Hall, as you know, was an integral part of economic development in Denison. The biggest project ever, the Schuler Project, that is now ready to see dirt turning, wouldn't have happened without legislation from the federal level. When we had our announcement, we really talked about how it took, you know, ten agencies, an act of Congress, and a signature from the President to make this happen, and it really, really did that. But there were times along the way that the project hit the stall button. And I don't know that it was anybody's particular fault when you're dealing with entities such as the EPA, that just kind of slows everything down. But our Congressman was there. He was there from the beginning, and when called upon to gently push this and get it back on track, he was there. I remember a time when I was on the council that I had the privilege to go into Washington, D.C. with Mayor Brady. And we had a meeting in the Pentagon in the Secretary of the Army's office. Secretary Guerin's office took a meeting with us, because it was just, the project had stalled. And the only reason the Secretary of the Army takes a meeting in his office in the Pentagon is because his good friend and Congressman Ralph Hall made that call to make it happen. And he was there that day. He was also at numerous meetings that we had with the Corps of Engineers throughout this project. And Congressman, every citizen in Denison thanks you for that effort. And it's a privilege for us to recognize you this evening for your work in economic development. And so if you will, my friend, come forward.
Hey, I don't know if I walked that far enough.
Whereas Congressman Ralph Hall was instrumental in the passage of the Water Resource Development Act of two thousand and seven, which holds a promise to be the single largest land development act in the history of Grayson County, and upon completion will quadruple the tax base of the city of Denison. And whereas Congressman Hall has remained actively engaged in the implementation of this act, and whereas Congressman Hall has shown continued interest and has offered gentle encouragement, and has continued to help navigate the parties through all of the implementation parameters, and whereas Congressman Hall has spent a lifetime in public service, including serving the citizens of Denison, Texas, as our District Four Representative to Congress for the last thirty-three years, and whereas Congressman Hall has spent over fifty-five years serving the interests of his neighbors and fellow citizens as Rockwall County Judge, as Senator for the State of Texas, and as a member of the United States House of Representatives, and is currently the Dean of the Texas Congressional Delegation. And whereas Congressman Ralph Hall's professionalism, integrity, and commitment to serving Denison has been foremost in all that he has done as a representative of Denison, Texas. Now therefore, I, Jared Johnson, Mayor of the City of Denison, do hereby proclaim December sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen, as Congressman Ralph Hall Day in the City of Denison.
I didn't know I'd done all this. You know, the name of the street after me in Rockwall, the only good I had out there was the guy called me the other day and said, "Hall, I got a ticket on your sorry street." But I'm honored here. Denison is a great place to work, here, easy to represent. I had full cooperation and full support from the mayor, all of his group, the county, everybody here was going in one direction. It's easy to help people out there. And just so happened that Pete Guerin was my best friend in the world, and he was Secretary of the Army. So when I'd have anything that was interested in, you know, if they were interested in, like Clyde and somebody came up one time, they wanted to see the Secretary of Army, and I had him in my office, I thought, "I own him." To tell you the truth, we had a penny and poker game. And he wasn't much of a poker player, but he was very rich, and we'd send a cab for him. Pete Guerin should have been at all these things when we were honoring him, because he came through for us time after time after time. And I'm honored. It's good to get to do anything about people, and it's good to meet you in the City of Denison, this county, this area. I'm humbled by it, I'm proud of it. Question some of it in here pretty much, but I'm going to accept it. And thank you, Matt. And I praise all of you, and I hope God's good, took you good health and takes care of your family. Christmas is a time for love, when we all love one another. I have every reason in the world to be grateful to you, Mayor, and to all the folks that worked for you, and for all these folks who cared enough to come in. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Do want to, Larry, before you leave, do want to recognize our state representative, Honorable Larry Phillips, who's here tonight to celebrate Mr. Hall's achievement with us, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. It's good for me to be twelve-hundred-and-fifty miles north of here and know a guy like that standing here in my district doing the same thing I would do. But I want to be like him when I grow up. And Clyde, thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome. To you, Mayor.
Okay, item three, the consent agenda. Actually, two items will be pulled from the agenda, on C and E, both related to Main Street, the Denison Main Street. Board members will take those up in January. Is there a motion on the rest of the items?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, Councilmember Guy, second from Councilman Malvern, all in favor, I say an aye.
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 Close like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item four A, public hearings on one thousand West Martin Luther King, Miss Brockin.
Mayor and Council, we would not receive or report a public hearing in consideration ordinance for zone change from office district to single-family five district, submitted by Martin Fulton. He's the owner of the property, and he would like to use the property as a residential use. The property is surrounded by single-family five, multifamily, and local retail districts. We notified eleven property owners, we had one approval and double-staffed approvals. Planning of zoning recommended approval and staffs recommend approval.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to this agenda item? Yes, sir, please.
Yes, sir.
If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Martin Fulton, the owner of the property, and I currently live in Sherman. And I felt, when I bought this property back in March, that it would be a good property to lease out. And John Munson helped me for several months. He was unable to find a tenant, so I changed my mind, and I thought I'd rather occupy the property rather than stay where I'm at in Sherman. It would be a big step up for me. So I think I've been a good neighbor so far, maintained the property pretty well. It was pretty rough when I bought it. Me and another helper spent two days just cleaning up debris from the back of the property. So again, I'd just like to occupy the premises, and for me, it would be a step up from where I am now.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here wishing to speak to this agenda item of the public hearing? There'll be another public hearing that's closed, discussion with council.
I need to approve.
Second. I have a motion from Councilman Malvern, second. Councilman Spindel, all in favor, I say an aye.
Aye.
Close like sign. Motion carries. Agenda item five A, the LDG Development, Mr. Hannah.
Thank you, Mayor. We have before tonight a resolution in support of a multifamily housing addition, and what we're actually supporting is a concept and the need to have development at this time in our community. LDG Development's interested in pursuing a tax credit, eligible apartment complex, and tax credits are a tool used by developers and investors to offset tax liability. Those are sold a couple times through various implements, and investors are able to loan money to projects to construct these apartments. In return, the apartments are required to be leased at rents below market. It's not Section Eight housing, it's market housing. Some of the units have to be below market. I have dealt with this type of development in other communities, and it can be first class. I believe LDG Development is here tonight to present their project to council, and you can ask them whatever questions they may have, you may have about the development overall, staff would support this concept. The city to date has installed about five-hundred-thousand dollars in in-kind benefits recently. Had a bond, road bond election, those road bonds were used to improve Crawford, but for those road improvements, you would not be able to access this property. So there's a direct benefit to this property and developments taking place because of those bonds. Staff report has a number of four-hundred-and-twenty thousand, and it's actually five-hundred-thousand, and the resolution has the correct value. That concludes staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, but the developer is also here, and he may be able to provide you a better understanding of your actual project vision.
Let's go, is it Jen?
I believe Mr. Justin Harz. Go ahead.
My name's Justin Harz with LDG Development, regionally based out of Austin, Texas. We have about seventeen-hundred units in operation in Texas right now. Our corporate office is based out of Wilt, Kentucky, and this is a proposal that we've been looking into for the last six months, and we've had multiple meetings with your old city manager, Robert Harz. This proposed project's a hundred-and-fifty units, and this is an existing project we're building within Texas. It's a two-three, two-story, so you have two stories and three stories in the middle. And this project will be located off of West Crawford Street, and we will be getting access off West Crawford Street, where there's an existing curb cut currently. I'm sorry. And the proposed site plan, as you see, there is the existing low area to the middle of the two tracks parcels, and we will be looking to civil design to actually access both tracks, and we will be coming back for potentially a PD zoning. The front track is a commercial, the back track is a multifamily. In addition, I have one little piece to it. We are, there is going to be some existing green space in the northeast quadrant that will be dedicated, it's like a dedicated parkland space, green space, that will be open to the community, just won't be just for the tenants' use only, but it can also be used within the community. Here's our proposed rendering. This is approximately thirty-five percent Texas stone with cementous siding. So that's our saw that we use regionally, and we did add some additional Texas stone to accommodate some additional stone accents, which was, I think, would meet Gerald's blue coat pairable. Just a quick little summary here for the development, a hundred-and-fifty new apartment units on existing fourteen-point-nine-one acres. There will be one, two, and three bedrooms. There will be twenty-four one-bedrooms at eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet, a hundred-and-thirty-two two-bedrooms at a thousand-seventy-two square feet, and ninety-six units of three bedrooms at a thousand-one-eight-five square feet. Our proposed rents will be six-hundred-and-forty dollars to eight-hundred-and-ninety dollars per month. The total investment for this project is twenty-one million, five-hundred. As we were talking about, this project will be paying city taxes, state taxes, there's no tax payment request for any kind. Building specs, hundred percent stone, cementous exterior composition, thirty-five-year dimensional shingles, fifteen sheer. Air-conditioning units, our insulation will be R-15, R-30. All appliances that will be supplied to the tents will be NG-starred, and every unit will have a covered patio and balcony with laundry and dryer huggers. Our building standards will meet LEED certified standards, and if requested, we can take it to the LEED certification, but we know just for the state's requirements, it will be LEED certified, so. And around the existing whole apartment complex will be gated, and a decker, balloon, and fencing will be around the project. Here's our proposed one-bedroom layout. As you see, we do use the, it's basically Wusson Arts wood flooring with carpet in the bedrooms, with tile in the bathroom floors, and shower stall. Two bedrooms, very similar layout, just with an additional one-bedroom. I would actually additionally add, you know, the balcony patio is on every unit. Give or take, it's very large, accommodating two-bedroom unit that meets any kind of comparable market rate unit. The three-bedroom unit, just with one additional bedroom. We do have a kind of a open kitchen layout with the dining room and the social area that you can put your teeth in, so it's a very open, easy, accessible family unit. Moving on to the clubhouse design. It'll be a one-story clubhouse, approximately about three-five-hundred square feet. There'll be a computer lab that is accessible to all the tenants. Common area, fireplace, you can rent it out for parties, meantime, the weekends. Additionally, will be a theater room, exercise room, laundry room. Additionally, we do have a community pool in the back, I guess they can flip to the next one. So you have your clubhouse, and within the clubhouse common area, you'll have kitchen ette, exercise room, health and wellness classes, we do supply to our tenants, usually two or three times a week. And then out by the pool, you'll have a senioring to Niva. For the little infants and toddlers, we'll have a tot lot, and we have a children's playground. We also do give open areas for some grills and bitches. Additional site amenities, the whole complex will be gated, community, the tenants will have a code, or a key vault to actually access the front gate. For the fire department, there'll be blowout gates. So the fire department, they do have an emergency, they'll need a code, they can actually have click within their engines, they can click on all microchips. Every building will have a security camera that's linked to the clubhouse, and it's recorded monthly, we keep on record for them one year. Additionally, if the police department would like out space, they can use as police substation, we do have additional room that they can use within clubhouse, that has Wi-Fi, a desk, and a clean restroom. It is very close to McDaniel's Middle School and elementary school there. Moving on, additional, this is the location of the proposed green space area. Moving on. Additional, this is just the location of the proposed green space area within the site layout along South Lily's Lane. Question back to the financing piece of this. This project will be financed with NAPR and tax credits. Those NAPR and tax credits are sold off to the private market. The purchasers of tax credits are major banks, which are used to offset Community Reinvestment Act. Then also too, we use conventional loan debt from, really from like Commerica Bank is investing and doing a lot of our debt structure right now. And we do pay our city and county tax real.
That's a quick little proposed summary for y'all.
Mayor?
I may add one comment to that presentation. In the past, you discussed apartment complexes that we would offer tax abatement incentives to. They are now requesting tax abatement incentives, so they want to underscore the fact that essentially our economic development role in this is simply passing the resolution, recognizing the $500,000 you've already committed to the project as an in-kind benefit, and setting our support for the project.
Justin, can you speak to, to the future maintenance? I know that there's some funds that y'all have to keep aside, I guess for future maintenance. Maybe it's escrow, I think that's the right word. But I know it's important as people look at these, they're like, yeah, that looks great today, but 10, 15, 20 years.
I can play understand. One piece I'll add before answering your question. Everything we've built, our portfolio with LDG has actually seen 4,000 units. Every piece we do, we actually own, develop, and keep within our own real estate portfolio. Relating to your yearly maintenance and future maintenance, for the state, since we use tax credits, they require us to have an operator reserve, which is six months of expenses, plus your debt service coverage, which is your loan piece, for six months. And it has, once you use that, it has to be refunded back into the escrow account. So continuously, let's say that we have a project from 10 years down the road, and we have some products right now, we, you know, we have $650,000 sitting in a bank account that does get touched unless we have an emergency for the project, or some kind of, you know, pay the new road in, or new drive, paint the exterior of the buildings. We can use that type of reserve to repair those maintenance issues.
Other questions for Hars? Thank you. We do have several folks that want to speak. This is the gentleman tonight. Jeff Hofer. Thank you, Justin. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jeff Hofer. I live at 3430 West Crawford Street here in Dennison. I've been a resident for approximately five and a half years now. The, the idea of the apartment complex, I think, is great for the city of Dennison. I think it does that benefit for single multifamily residents that want to reside within our community. My, my strong opposition to this is the location. As stated to the other housing developments and everything that have been in place in this immediate area for a number of years, I don't think it's attractive to the city of Dennison as far as a highway view as commuters and other people from the local area or multi-area comes through this area. I think this is, is nice as it looks at on the picture, but I, I don't, I don't, I do not believe that it will be maintained at the rate or with the funds that the gentleman speaks of. I think, I think the property, if it is commercially zoned, I'm in favor of leaving it commercially zoned.
Amen.
And being in place what it is today. The, the commercial area in that specific area is ideal for commercial. It's not ideal for an apartment complex such as this.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Name and address, please, for the record.
Robert Gates, leave, that's 1030 Deer Creek Drive, which is right around the corner from where you're talking about. I need to find out some particular, how many, how much land is going to be involved in this plan?
14 acres, 14 from 15 acres.
Approximately 15 acres.
Okay, got it. Have to add the parking.
Justin, can you speak to the parking?
For the parking, we had, for every unit, we had two parking spots per unit.
I don't, like Mr. Hofer, I don't think that's a place for that kind of apartment. Just too many places, you know, that you've got more room.
Right. That's the reason why we chose to locate, for this, we have 10 units per acre, which is very nicely planned for, you know, a lot of the proposed projects we had due now, right now, we're looking at 24 units per acre. And this one's planned 10 units per acre.
And, and Faye, that's well within our guidelines for our multi-housing, so, correct?
You play on the channel for multi.
Correct. Mr. A, Mr. Ates, if you'll address your comments to the council, please, and we'll try to help facilitate for you.
I just can't see that kind of unit going there and being a benefit to the city of this. And at least it needs to be a benefit, even though at least they're building it, it needs to be a benefit to us. And that is a trash problem on Crawford Street right now. You put, how many more units? How many units is there?
Three.
What is it?
I said there's 50 units, just a hundred dollars more in there right now. And that would really cause confusion, I'd say. Especially when school's out, people going back and forth to school. It's going to be really difficult. I, I just, I'll let you know that I'm opposed to it, and I'll leave it like that.
All right. Thank you, sir. Chief, after Mr. Davis speaks, I'm going to ask you to, to talk about the traffic from your perspective.
My name is David Davis, 37 Village Green, Dennison, approximately one block from this proposed location. Just want to say that I'm very strongly opposed to the location that these apartments would be located at. I am not opposed to apartments coming to Dennison, as I feel that they are needed on many levels. But these areas that we're talking about have been recently developed with very high-scale end homes. And I just don't feel that putting this type of apartment amongst these homes is doing the citizens just. I mean, you don't want to have homes $500,000 apiece, and someone come in and build a one-bedroom house next door to you. You know what that would do to your property value. You don't want a trailer house next to your $250,000 home. It's kind of the point I'm getting at here, is that's what is being done. I understand the economic impact of what the city of Dennison is looking for. I understand the apartments we do need. However, I feel that we already have apartment locations that would be more suited for this type of development, and that we should look there. Not taking away commercial property right on Highway 75 and putting it right in the middle of, of these existing homes. Also have a concern about a three-story apartment that's right in the middle of the neighborhood that can look down into other homes, backyards, windows, et cetera. Takes away a lot of privacy from those homes that they did not expect when either they built or purchased that home back in the day. As I have strong opposition to it, but I'm not opposed. I understand the need for apartments, just not this location.
Any questions for Mr. Davis? Thank you, sir. And I think that's, the undertone here that we continue here is, is quite accurate on the need. We know without a question that this community needs, needs multifamily housing from a, from a nice upscale apartment complex perspective. And we certainly understand what you're saying on, on the location. We understand the two differences there, so thank you all for that. There's one more. Dave Gotbridge?
Dave Gutfrids.
Dave Gutfrids.
No, Dave Gutfrids, 18 Village Green Court, right here in Dennison. And let me say this. Yeah, this is new, this kind of property, but at this location, this is prime real estate. Let's go to Sherman, where Sherman Town Center is. Let's look at Logan's Roadhouse. If years ago, there had been apartment complex built there. Now, this is subsidized housing, call it tax credits or whatever you want. It looks great when it's new. 10 years from now, who knows what happens? They file bankruptcy. I mean, people that are paying $200 or $300 a month for rent now will be able to move in there and get the government to pay the rest of it for them. Logan's Roadhouse, let's just say 15, 10 years ago, before the Sherman Town Center went in, they had built something similar to this. Would that be there like that now? Probably not. That is prime real estate out there. And I think the tax dollars you're going to receive, sales tax and the property tax you're going to get from the city of Dennison is going to far outweigh the, you know, the economic development that you're going to get, you know, from this project. So I would say that I would look strongly at that, because this is the future. It's the future of Dennison out there. I mean, there's no better property in Dennison than that. Y'all agree? Yes or no?
There's some more.
There's some more, but that's good, yeah. That's good property.
Lower hanging fruits such as the 691 and 75.
Sure, sure.
Obviously, to our, our.
I would give that a lot of good thought. I think there's other places that can be built, and I think in the long run, if we're looking towards the future, that it'd be better to put this project on hold and just leave it as uncommercial. Thank you.
Chief, can you, can you speak to any, any thoughts you have on, on the traffic that this would impact out there on the corner of Crawford and Will's?
I don't have any yet. Specific traffic or accident data for this particular area, what we look at is the condition of the roadways, the intersections, those sort of things. Of course, being around a school, any school, there's going to be traffic congestion during, during school, morning and afternoon rush. Typically, with any project, whether it be apartments, new subdivisions, or whatever, I think you're going to see an increase in traffic. And, you know, I can't really, I guess, offer much assessment as far as, is it going to be, you know, impossible or more difficult for, for people to get around? Like I said, we look more at the condition of the roadways and the ability of degress and those sort of things. And, and I don't, I don't see that it's going to be a major problem, but then again, it could be a huge problem. I just, at this point, I can't offer, I guess, a good answer of what you're looking for.
Thank you. Mr. Hannah, when's the, when's the deadline for cement on their project?
I'd refer that to the applicant, but I will tell you that I think they need the resolution. I don't know if I have to get it passed tonight, but it's going to get passed sometime soon. Gentlemen, do y'all know the date, the drop dead date you would need us by?
Right. We need the resolution to be pushed through by the middle of January, and then the, I don't know, the front piece is still commercial, so I think we're talking to Faye, Ms. Brockett, potentially the PD zoning, but that does not require to actually get the commitment and tax credits, which is in and around by April. But for the state, y'all, you know, always use the deadline, so.
Okay, thank you. So, so, so really then, if, if we chose to table this tonight, January 6th agenda would accommodate, would not put that in jeopardy from, from the deadline standpoint?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. B.
Hey, David might know this answer. Village Green, how many units is back in that little area, or homes?
30.
30?
30, potential for one more.
Okay. That's why I was just curious, because I'm, you know, I know, I don't believe they currently have much of an issue with, and that's just got one entrance and one entrance. And this will have two entrances?
Two entrance exits.
I believe that's correct, yeah. 30, 150.
Another discussion with the council? You know, from my perspective tonight, really, I appreciate those that came to speak. When we looked at the apartment complex over at a more progressive development, I guess, over there by Hucks and Loy Lake Road, we got a lot of citizen pushback for completely different reasons. None of which were stated tonight, which I really thought that was interesting, because this project is different when you look at the commercial perspective. I would like to take more time to, to think about this, council, if we can agree to table it until the January 6th meeting. Really to look at the commercial implications that are being mentioned, simply from the standpoint of, I'm not convinced that that, that commercial timeline is very near to that corner as it is, 691, 75, Loy Lake Road, and then to even skip that intersection and go to what they call in the retail world, these teardrops at 75 and 84 in the future. I really want to talk with our economic development professionals in the coming weeks and, and discern that, that more. So, did you have a question? If you would, please, name and address for the record.
My name is Lee Alstead. I reside at 1,000 West Lamworth in Sherman, Texas. I'm the property owner. I've owned this property for the last 15 years. And I, I recognize everyone's concerns, but I want to share a little, one interesting tidbit. First off, the back half this track that fronts Lilis is already a multifamily. Second part of this, I have not seen a commercial offer, or a commercial developer, in over nine years approach me about developing that track of land. So I understand the concern that, yes, I would love to develop this commercially. Obviously, there would be a tremendous value in a per square foot on a commercial basis, but I've not seen an offer in nine years. So I think I'm qualified to sit up here and say I've owned this property for 15 years, paid taxes on it for 15 years. And if I thought commercial was the best way to go, I would be chasing that. But I've seen no offers to that effect. I've seen no one even approached me with an idea in nine years on this. And so the commercial value is not there today. There's too much land between that track of land and 120 and 75. There's too much land on the west side of the highway that is prime commercial property that would fall in front of this track of land. So we're looking at another 10 years minimum, probably. I hope Dennison progresses faster than that. I'm all for it. I have multiple pieces of property in this community. I've grown up in this community, in Grayson County, my whole life. So I'm not going anywhere. But I've not seen any development from a commercial side, and so I think it's important for all of you to know that it is, the residents here say this is the best use for this property. Sure is. If you've got somebody that's willing to buy it, but in the last nine years, I haven't even had somebody kick the tires. So.
And I, I think that was, that's precisely what I just said, but I think the council just needs some time to be able to discern that.
Fair enough. I just, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted that to be known as a property owner. I've got the whole history on it. So I think it's only fair to have all the facts. I appreciate y'all having to speak. Thank you.
Hey, if I'm not mistaken, we had a property that was going to put in some type of little strip area, a little four or five, was that just on the south side there, on that little service road?
North of Crawford.
Closer to Crawford Street.
Crawford Street Road.
Okay.
Intersecting road.
Okay, so it's on, was further up there. But that project, it's stalled. That was about two years ago, I'm assuming. Any other discussion or motion from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion we table this until January 8th.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make the motion we table this until January 8th.
Say.
Have motion for councilwoman Spindel, second for councilman Raleigh. All in favor, by saying aye.
Aye.
A light sign. Motion carries. So Robert, if you would, get that on the, I think it's the January 6th meeting, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all for everyone that came to participate in that. Agenda item 5B, the extended amplified permit for the office sports bar chief.
Mayor and councilmember, if you'll remember, December 2012, the office sports bar was approved for a one-year period of allowing amplified sound for late-hour operations. The time period ended December the 9th this year. Trial period exempted the business from the current city ordinance reference level requirements and/or hours of operation after 11:30 PM. Police departments gathered data, referenced the calls for service, reports taken, arrests made for the year previous to the late-hours permit and for the last year that allowed the late-hours amplified sound. And there was a memo attached to your packet. If you had a chance to review that. But the data revealed a significant increase in calls for service, which includes citizen complaints of noise, number of reports taken, the number of arrests during the one-year period the late-hour amplified sound permit was approved. Our calls went up significantly. Calls for service went up 100% with the majority of those after 11:00 PM. The reports generated were over almost three times, two and a half times. On scene arrests were up over 300% during that period with 25 of the 26 arrests after 11:00 PM. We had an incident in September where a major fight broke out at the bar. Two of our officers were jumped, kicked, and punched. We ended up arresting four people in September. Also, there was just one weekend period where five alcohol-related arrests were made. Two involved DWIs that allegedly came from that bar. Police department continues to be called and contacted. We've had, I think there was a change in management back in October, not ownership but management, back in October. We continue to get the noise calls from the neighborhoods surrounding that. I can go over other data with you if you want. Our recommendation is that we return to the current city ordinance, which would end the late-hour amplification sound permit at the office sports bar.
Questions for the chief before we move several to speak?
Chief, can you relate these statistics you have on that to the other bars here that have outside application extended hours and what your calls are there?
We didn't look at all the bars. We just, we made some random, did some random research, and one of our major ones, the noise complaints in the last six months, like we had one for this particular one that we did, so downtown bar, disturbance calls were, we had a total of 28 calls over six months. And in relation to the office in that same time period, we had 47 calls. And I mentioned noise disturbances. We also have a category just called disturbance, and that could be noise, it could be fighting, it could be public intoxication. So I'm just, I just mention specifically the ones that were typed in as noise disturbance. And like I said, we had 18 of those in the last six months with the office and one at this particular bar that's downtown. But to answer your question, we didn't compare every bar, but I can tell you, we get more calls and we have more responses to the office than we do any other bar in town.
How many have the outside or have the extended hours of application?
I think just about all of them do, don't they? That was one of the reasons I think that this, they were allowed to, the office was allowed to have their trial, their one-year extension.
I think a difference is not everybody has outside, the ability to have music outside. There's a handful of areas to do.
That's one, that's one particular instance, wanting to have the outside music and application.
Chief, clearly, did you say that out of all those disturbances, only 18 were noise? I mean, I know that's a lot, too, but the rest of them were?
No, I mean, we had 18 that were categorized as specifically as noise disturbances. We also had other disturbance calls, but those could be, those, I can't say for sure all those disturbance calls were noise-related. They could have been, like I said, a fight, it could have been something else.
Right.
It's kind of, the disturbance category is a catch-all, that if the dispatcher doesn't want to be specific, or they may not know exactly what type of disturbance it is, we don't know until the officers get there, and sometimes those are also noise-related.
Those noise disturbance related ones, are those, can they be tracked down? How many different people that has, how many different citizens that made that disturbance call? Is that one, two, 10, 18 different?
Most of them come, looks like, just in reviewing this, looks like they come off of South Armstrong.
From all the same person or from multiple?
Looks like the same addresses, most of the ones that are specific to noise. Something over on Hill, a bird.
Lafayette?
Yes, sir.
Got some more. A handful of, so.
One other question, when your on-scene arrest here, that's actually at the club, in the hard club?
Yes, sir. That particular category was at, was at, in or outside the club and on the premises?
Thank you. We have, I guess, three wishing to speak for this one, Larry McGaffey. Name an address, please, for the record.
Larry McGaffey, 1827 South Armstrong, Dennison. I have, I was the one that came last year and talked about this issue, and I'm not even aware of any music violations or what I would call noise violations, because we have a gun that is exactly calibrated to the city's gun. It would never been over 11. Now, what happened is, we had a music contractor that came in Friday, Saturday night, and she was playing hip-hop and rap, and we know that the bass and that kind of music is louder, curious further, et cetera. But the noise level was kept down. That type of music also brought in what I call a bad element, and I had tried to ramrod it for a long time, finally I just said, you can't come back and play more music? And they never came back. And so our music, our customer base is being cut by 50%. We just changed it so there's no rap, there's no gangster music played, and consequently, and I'm not aware of that, I tried to get an audience with the chief today to see if we could find out if this has had a sobering effect on, because it's not like it used to be, you know? And I have a letter from, excuse me, this is a letter from Fats Audio Vision, and they actually, finger fingers, wrote this letter. I have a copy for all of the council members. And then this is also a list of music contractors or bands that we've had play since we did away with the hook bad over. And we haven't had any fights, we haven't had any issues, we haven't had anything since that weekend. And this is a list of entertainment that we've had since then. And I just, I knew that it was festering and building because of the type of clientele that was coming in, and even talking with detectives the next day, they knew because they, and I didn't know this, they told me that it was a lot of the same people that used to rent this community building at the end of Armstrong. I'm not familiar with it, but a couple of detectives had told me the same group of people when they used to rent that, and they had a lot of trouble there, had migrated to our place. So, and I guess the city quit ringing that. I'm not real sure about it, because that's not, not anything I was aware of. But I would like to appeal to maybe look at what kind of activity we've had at the police department since 10/11, or she had to play 10/11, so we'd be happy with that, and see if we can review that timeframe, which has only been two months, but then maybe extend our late-night permit for a three-month period, trial period, something like that. By the way, we've always had a late-night permit, so the trouble, like the police chief was reporting, that increased 300% was only because of the type of music that was played, because it brought in a different clientele of people. And so before that, we still had a late-night permit, always. So when you see that increase from 2011 or 2012 to today, that's because of the type of people that were in there, not the noise. We needed the noise. Every time the police would come out, stand there right there with their guns, and we were well within the guidelines that the council gave us last time, even after y'all lowered it from what we had a year before. So I just don't think that the noise was the problem. I think the clientele that was coming in was the problem. And I'm really not aware personally of any arrest or any police request activity at our establishment since the change in venue.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
So the outlier on only time period is 10/11, correct? Is that what you're saying? You had a band that was bringing in a wrong crowd?
It was actually a DJ, and it's from the radio station 1073, and it's hip-hop and rap. The girls love it, but it also brings in a bad element.
Okay, I'm just trying to clarify that, that's 10/11?
It was the last day that she played.
Okay.
Okay? And so we changed it after that. I fired her, and we have since, we do have a DJ, but he can only play oldest country for rock. And we eliminated it. We took it off of our jukebox, we did everything, because the clientele had taken over our establishment rather than us operating what we wanted to operate.
Thank you. Chief Barge, how, does this correlate to your findings or arrests? Have we had any violations since 10/11 or significant activity?
We ran today from October 12th through December 4th. We've got the five noise complaints. We've got a total of 17 entries. Two are miscellaneous. We've got an assault, motor assist, two drunks, drunk driver, overdose, suspicious person in the noise complaints.
And the assault on the officers occurred when?
That was in September, September 27th.
So that was prior to, okay, prior to September?
Yes, sir.
So, Chief, those numbers that you just read, were those included in the statistics that we received in our package, or is that after?
Not the most recent. The statistics that I gave you were through November the 5th.
Okay, so these are additional complaints?
Yes, ma'am. These are, you didn't have these. We ran these today just to see what we had.
See, I'm not aware of any of those because, I guess, because of the communication. Obviously, I don't go to the bar and stay late at night. I'm never up there when any of this happens. We haven't received any citations. We haven't received any communication from the police department. We haven't received any flak on the hand, so to speak, or anything that might have happened so that we could continue to find, tweak, and tune the club.
So did you have, what kind of staffing changes you had, did you have here?
It's all music, all music related. As a matter of fact.
I'm just, I mean, you talked about a different crowd, you know, obviously, there's clubs that can have a certain crowd, different type of music that can control that or try to watch, you know, how much they're serving or over-serving. Did you increase staff to meet those new needs?
No, because our business went down 50% when we did that instantly. And so we didn't have, as a matter of fact, all of the people who worked for us have taken at least a 50 to 60% company because of the lack of business, because we ran off 300 people paying us, 300 people.
You're talking about before, since October 11th, that was busier or it was less business?
Yes. It's less business after October 11th, since we changed the venue and we, I mean, it was.
So that's back to my question, is before October 11th, during the time that you hired the DJ that brought in all this business, that we had some bad elements coming in, as you were saying, what was your staffing changes that you made internally? Did you hire more, you know, bouncers?
We did hire more bouncers. I'm going to be quite honest, they're scared. These are big old guys. I'm an old man. I'd go out in the parking lot and say, hey, you got to come in or go out. They just hang in the parking lot. They can hear the music, so they didn't even want to go in. There was, I mean, so I'd have to clear the parking lot at my age and tell them, you either go in or go home. And then at 2:00 in the morning, generally when the police were coming, there would be 100 cars in the parking lot, and I would have to, okay, let's go, let's go. You got to do this, because my security people were scared to approach me. Now, they never give me any problem. I never had a problem. But I do know that there were fights, and I never was witness to one, but I do know that there were fights, but I'm just, I would, I would love to get, I'm in my office every day right next door, to get communication from the police department of what happened, when it happened, so that we would know and we could continue to deal with the problems that we need to deal with, rather than it comes to two or three months' worth of reports, you know?
The officers that were assaulted, that was in middle of September, first of September?
Middle of September.
But so you continued for another three weeks or four weeks to have this?
Well, because I told her, you can't play this kind of music, you can't play this, you can't play that, and then she just kept on doing whatever she wanted to do. And actually, one night, we received a ticket from the police department for a foul word coming over the microphone, and I had just talked to her an hour and a half before that and said, tone it down, you're going too, you're going too far out in space with this. You know what I'm saying? And then she didn't even respect that. And then after an hour, I came back and I guess one of the songs had foul word in it, and I got a ticket for about $55. So I was pretty frustrated in dealing with her, okay? And when I talked to TVC, by the way, I talked to TVC after the officer assault, and we were at length, and she just came right out and told me, she said, it's your DJ, that's the problem, the music that they're playing is bringing in all your bad element. And I haven't seen any problems. Now, if the chief says that he has this list of complaints, you know, I would love to see him and deal with them individually, or at least know about them, because I don't even know what they are. I've asked everybody the worst of them, have we had any problems since we changed the venue of the club? And she, they all indicated to me, no, I don't think we've had any problems. We had to have the police write it off. So that's kind of what I'm trying to, I'd like to address those issues, you know?
Larry, I mean, it sounds like you're trying to do some stuff. I know that this time last year, the council gave an extension to, I guess, the first trial period of some point, and the council has been, has been, has tried to give a, give this an opportunity. We'll tone down, we understand what the neighbors are saying, it's what we've always heard. We understand, we understand, we understand. And I just, if I heard you correctly, just heard you say that you're not even there.
No, I'm not there.
And so, so when I'm trying to fix a problem, that's my problem, I got to be there.
Well, first of all, I'm not going to stay in the bar till 2:00 in the morning or that.
I understand, you don't have to do that every day, but if there's a problem in the, in your establishment, I mean, I just don't understand how you, how you haven't been there very often.
I addressed it.
I don't say every day.
I addressed it. It was kind of like, it's kind of like a dimmer. I didn't necessarily have a light switch to turn the light on and off, but I kept dimming the light until eventually I had to make a change. And I, I was worried, you know, I was worried about the liability, I was worried about a lot of things. And I didn't like what I saw. I did come up there, maybe one, one out of four weeks, something like that, and watch and observe. And it's, it's just something that I needed, as with any business, I don't think you have the ability to just ramrod a change from here to there, but you can make changes. I mean, literally, all of these people quit coming the minute I get away with the music room. I mean, all of them. We don't have any transient people coming. These were not people necessarily from Dennison, Texas. A lot of them, I mean, most of them were coming. I mean, most of them were coming from Chicago. And it was because Applebee's was closing at 12, and then they would come to our club. So that's why it happened after 11 o'clock. But we got rid of all those people. I would, I would love to sit down with the chief and discuss the incidents that have happened since October and so that I can make other changes. I want to make sure that we live by the law. But we have, what I wanted to reiterate is, I really don't think we've ever had any noise offenses. We've probably had calls, but I'm not aware of any time that our leader didn't agree with denizens and we were below the level, okay?
We've got two others that want to speak to this agenda item. Bobby Monroe, please name an address at least for the record.
Bobby Monroe, 1032 West Chase. And my opinion on his loud music, I still hear it every night. I believe the decibel reading that is allowed by the city is 80 or 85. I'm not quite sure, because I didn't look on the internet to find out. But my understanding that a vehicle starting running down a road is 80 decibels, and I can hear the traffic on the other side of the railroad track, but yet I can still hear the music beating in my living room at two o'clock in the morning while they're still playing. And this guy says that he's not there yet, he's probably in bed asleep while I'm having to listen to this music all night long, trying to sleep. Within an hour today, hour and 15 minutes probably, I have 15 signatures from the people that live around that area on both sides of the club, Woodline, Florence, Ford.
Will you get into our city attorney's office?
That's, that's probably within, within an hour and 15 minutes after I got off work today, going around and getting these signatures. And if I had, would have had more time, or maybe if I'd done it earlier, I could have gotten pages. These people were glad to sign this. They said, where's your pen at? I want to sign it now.
Aren't they glad to be here?
And I, most of these people are, are not able to be here. That's why they're not here. They're ill, they're old age. That's why they're not here. I have six phone calls on my phone myself within the last three or four weeks of the noise that I've called in myself. One of them was on a Sunday night, December 1st, I believe it was, about the noise level coming from the club. It's a constant issue. I call all the time myself, and these people right here that sign this say they call all the time. So the noise issue is overwhelming. If he can sleep at night, I should be able to sleep at night myself.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
There's one other one, Paula Carrigan, also on Chase Street. Do you have anything new to offer, or?
Well, um...
If you want to name an address, please for the record.
Paula Carrigan, 1028 West Chase. When I try to watch TV, my normal volume is a 230 for their radio music, it's more like a 47. So I might as well not even turn on mine. I've got a TV in my bedroom, and I can still hear it in my bedroom. But I don't want to go in my bedroom and watch a 30 inch, 32 inch TV when I have a 60 inch in my living room, and I don't have high definition in my bedroom. And he says that he was shooting people away out of the parking lot, because his people wouldn't do it, but then he said that he's never at the club. So how can you go outside and shoot all these customers away, people that shouldn't be in the parking lot, and you're not, you're never there?
Well, I think what he said was he wasn't there late enough. That doesn't mean he's not there shooting.
Well, that's when he said he was shooting away after they closed, and he's just, you know. And it's just ridiculous, you know, not to be able to sit in your living room and watch TV and have to listen to the music that they play. You know, they're welcome anytime to come and sit in my living room, and they're open, and listen to what I listen to.
Have you seen an improvement over the last two months?
No, no, no.
Mr. Monroe, have you seen an improvement in the last two months?
No, sir.
And early November, they did play rap, in early November. So they're playing rap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, there's no change in the loud volume. The bass is overwhelming. I had the police officer, December 1st, whenever he came over on Sunday, come in my house and stand in my house with the door closed. I said, listen to what I have to listen to. He tried to get something done about it, and there wasn't anything done about it. It seems like maybe there needs to be more writing or whatever in the, the city laws other than decibel readings, because the decibel readings aren't working. They still do what they want.
Thank you, sir. Chief Barge, can you, the address, man, there's a, a couple of things. Noise disturbances, but no tickets to go with that?
Couple of things is, are, as you probably know, in a muted environment like a residence, it'll block out just about everything but the bass. So while the bass can be in tolerance of the ordinance, it can still be offensive or a nuisance. Where my officers get confused at times, for lack of a better word, is just, they do go to the business and do check the decibel readings, and they are within tolerance. And unless there's another offense, then a citation may not be issued for noise, the example of a language or something like that, or disorder conduct. So this is an issue that's frustrating for the citizens because we can't help them necessarily. It's a frustration for the officers because they're not sure at times what they can do, because they feel a little bit, I think, limited by their actions, by their options. But as far as enforcement, the officers are over there, I mean, we work the heck out of that business, of that bar. We're over there all the time. Now, whether or not the, the managers, you know, pass that information on to ownership, you know, I have no idea. But we're over there often, I usually get weekly reports on either how many times we were called, or how many times we stopped by, and we'll continue to do that. But I do, that's why I made the recommendation that we go back to our original ordinance and end this, because we don't, we don't have these problems at our other bars in town. We just don't.
Thank you. Larry, one other question for you. I think at one point, y'all were talking about a special fence.
We did put up a new fence. We talked about that. The fence, that's why we used mats and came in and put in a $16,000 sound system that everybody that uses has to use ours, they can't bring their own. And it points down, and that's what he's saying in the letter, that I actually had him come out about, about four weeks ago. And we replaced some speakers with smaller, one-directional speakers down. And then he also set a console, it's about the size of this, it has amplifiers. He actually said, as he says in the letter, we can't even change it. In other words, no matter how loud a band turns it up, it sticks. That's, that's as high as it's gonna go without mats coming in. And I really appreciate that. He and I talked about that, because if I'm not there, she'll say, I turned up some more, come on, you know? And the people are asking for that, they're in the club, but we got rid of that element, so we don't have that problem. I really would be surprised, for example, on 12-1, we didn't even have any entertainment outside. So I don't know how we could be loud, as you'll see on that list. I don't know how we could be loud if there's no entertainment outside, you know? That's, I want to, I really do want to be in compliance, and I really do want to deal with the issues, so that I cut them down as far as you can get them for any alcohol related or stuff, you know what I'm saying? But we didn't have anybody play that on December 1st, so I don't know how it could have been loud. And I appreciate, like the chief said, they might have come out, but we've always been in compliance. And that's even after y'all lowered it from 80 to 70, I believe, in the last council meeting, in the last extension of this late night permit.
Thank you, Larry. Further discussion, counsel?
Sir, can I have one more comment?
Yes, sir, please.
I'll start with December 1st, the Sunday. I was told they were having a cancer, dealer of cancer. And the, there's still two speakers that's on the front side of their band, where the band says, there's still two speakers that points out in the space, not down. And I believe that 99% of the noise is generated from that. If they were pointed down or moved down below the fence, that might help, but a taller fence would probably help much better, or just get rid of the music component, because it's too much, too much noise coming in there. Thank you, sir.
May I have one comment on the fencing? One of the things that was discussed with the previous business partners was trying to put some sound dampening blankets that the oil gas industry uses when they're drilling. And that's, the ownership decided to put in the $16,000 sound system instead. But that's where, I think, this council left that. They did construct, I think, an eight-foot tall, estimated eight-foot tall gates. But it's just wood, and I'm not a sound engineer, but this lane is understanding is that that's not gonna do a lot to absorb sound waves.
Sure.
What I would say is that we, I just want to...
Please come forward, then, so we can get it on, on the record.
I just want to reiterate that we have not been in violation of what we agreed to do with last council extension. We have a gun that is calibrated with the city, and we haven't had any noise violations, like the chief said. He comes out, he shoots his gun, the officer does, everything was within tolerances. So as far as it not changing since October, actually, the cancer benefit was 12,000, and it's on your list.
So how, from your perspective, what explains all the non-noise disturbance calls, that so much?
Bad element that we had coming in.
But I mean, even since then, has there not, there haven't been any since then?
Not that I, I mean, I was standing beside the chief, and he had a list, but it's very small writing. I'm not aware of, I've not been given any tickets, I haven't been even, you know, I'm not aware of noise myself, okay? But I would like to, anytime that there is a police intervention, so to speak, I would, I would love to be able to know about that the next day. Now, I can tell all my employees, da-da-da-da-da, but, you know, whether or not they do it or not.
Yeah, they should, they should probably tell you.
Exactly, and we, you know, if there's a breach of peace, which would mean that there was a disturbance where there was actually fighting or whatever, we have to file a breach report with the TBC. I'm not aware that we filed any breach reports since we made these changes in the music. I would put up, you know, as far as my personal, I would take and put up that fence. I could take it 15 feet tall, you know what I'm saying? And I could dampen that one wall, you know? But I just, I'll do just about anything that the citizens require to be able to... And here again, these are on Friday and Saturday nights. That's the only nights. That Sunday was a unique deal, lady had cancer.
I see.
We all saw it on TV.
And you know too, though, I mean, whether it's two nights a week or one night a week, I mean, that's a frustrating night for that individual.
Probably. And, you know, I mean, I live by a train track out east of Denison. I can tell when they, and I'm miles away from Red Yards, and I can tell when their shipping train shakes the house. So, I mean, there are situations where, I mean, if they can even hear it. I mean, I've been told that, hey, this was what a police officer told me. They're gonna flood the refrigerator so it doesn't make some noise. Now you can hear them. You see what I'm saying? Now, that's an exaggeration, maybe.
Sure.
But I was told that by an officer.
And on the flip side of that, there's been noise complaints in Lafayette, which I had to remind myself where that was.
I don't know where that is.
That's a long, pretty good ways away from, it's over on, off of Bullock, north, just north of Bullock, a little bit farther down, and...
And see, we have no amplification headed that way. So that's really a frustration, you know what I'm saying? We have no amplification pointing that direction at all. And plus, you have a large hill, I have another building behind me. So that just kind of...
Again, when I looked at the list of addresses that were on the, on the noise, that one just kind of stood out.
Right.
Because it is kind of far out.
The, when did you, you know, I know we had that police incident in the middle of September, you changed this at the middle of, middle of October. When did that start? When was your philosophy to change over to this? Was this something that started in May, at the beginning of summertime, or?
My philosophy to eliminate that.
When did you change whatever y'all were doing before?
I don't remember when we first hired her. I was, I was taking cancer treatments, I was real sick, okay? And at first, she did a good job, okay? But, and we had some radio promotion, we had some other things going on with them. But as it progressed, the crowd just got rowdier and rowdier and rowdier. And I, I would go down there from maybe one night a month, you know, and stay, just to kind of get a feel of what was going on. And I could tell that, you know, I didn't know really how to eliminate these people coming in without, and so what I did is I just changed the venue, you know? And it changed the crowd completely. We still have all of our regulars, none of them ever left. But I'm talking about the transients that were coming in on Friday and Saturday night, taking over the place.
Thank you. So again, just, we took a lot of time on this tonight, just because it's an important issue. It's an important issue for you as a business owner that, that, you know, has a lot of, you know, investment in there, and it's an important issue for that neighborhood. So, so, I mean, the council doesn't take it lightly, I don't, it's just a, again, the council has repeatedly, you know, given a couple of opportunities here, and so it's certainly not taken lightly. Discussion from the council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we follow staff's recommendation and go back to what the ordinance reads for the amplified sound.
Second?
We have a motion from Councilman Beck, second from the council member, got, on favor by saying aye. Aye. Pose flag sign. Motion carries. General 5C Municipal Court Costs, Ms. Wagner? Mayor, members of the council, you're here tonight to receive a report, hold a discussion, and approve an increase to the current municipal court costs by $2, and its fines by $3, and to fill the stop school bus fine fee so that they fall within the minimum requirement. Send the bill 1419 as a juvenile case manager's creation of the Treasury Prevention and Impersion Fund. This requires a person convicted in municipal or justice court of an offense other than an offense relating to a pedestrian or the parking of a motor vehicle to pay as a court cost $2 in addition to other court costs. Local governments that have no intention of establishing a juvenile case manager program send 100% of the costs collected to the state comptroller. The municipal court of the city of Denison is requesting fines be increased by $3 to help sustain the operations of our own municipal court. And House Bill 1174 amends Section 545.066 of the Transportation Code to increase the minimum and maximum fine for the misdemeanor offense relating to illegally passing a stop school bus. The minimum is now 500, and the maximum is 1250. You have a fee schedule attached as backup, and these fines and court costs will be in effect as of January 1, 2014. And I spoke with our court manager, she stated that the recommendations to increase fines are only made when court costs are increased by the state and other entities and we compared ourselves to, we're in line with, and they increased on a more frequent basis.
Any questions, council?
Would we approve the question, please?
Second?
Motion from Councilman Spindel, second from Councilman Malveron, on favor by saying aye. Pose flag sign. Motion carries. The council now going into executive session, present the chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code to discuss personnel matters related to the boards and commissions of the Civil Service Commission, zoning board of adjustments and appeals, and the planning zoning commission, and also discuss economic development negotiations.
and the planning and zoning commission, and also discuss economic development negotiations, present the chapter 551, 087, regarding TPJ robberies, time 7:30 PM.